So I thought it might be easier, since there could be quite a few people here, to have this, you know, our process, we really rely on the chat in our public Zoom meetings. You know, for the sign in, so that we have accurate spelling and agency association for guests. And then also, if we, if there are questions from the public, that they can go into the chat as well. So the other thing I need to say is that I am in the Shields Carter meeting room in order to ensure compliance with the Revised Open Meetings Act. I am, I have a board member with me, one of the board officers is also here with me. I put my hand in his screen, so you can see.
Yeah, it's for real.
And then I'm, we don't have a quorum of board members yet, so I just want to say to folks who are already here, thank you so much for coming. This is probably one of the most important topics that we all have in common, and I hope that it's a really robust discussion. I'm sure it will be. And thank you to Bev and Leon for putting it all together. Okay, we have, we don't have a quorum quite yet, but we have a few board members and we have both of the board chairs. I don't think we have a quorum of either board, but if you want to get started, I, I think, So let's, we can give people a couple more minutes. think, oh, here, we get more board members. So, and Stephanie is available to call the role whenever y'all are ready.
Do we have a quorum to call the role?
well, you know what, we might be close to a quorum. Actually, we might have a quorum for the mental health board. And I may have missed somebody, but I don't think we have a quorum of the Didi Board. So I'm going to stop sharing this and share the agenda instead.
Lynn, did you see that Jane showed up?
I did, Jane.
Okay, very good. Sorry, I was running late.
I think you take us to a quorum of the mental health board. I think so. Thank you all for signing in in the chat. That is so helpful. I really appreciate it. Dr. Yuakima and Dr. Robin are both here. I don't think we have a quorum of either board, but if you want to get started, I, I think, think, oh, here, we get more board members. So, and Stephanie is available to call the role whenever y'all are ready.
Do we have a quorum to call the role?
So I guess, well, you know what, we might be close to a quorum. Actually, we might have a quorum for the mental health board. All right, and I may have missed somebody, but I don't think we have a quorum of the Didi Board. So I'm going to stop sharing this and share the agenda instead.
Lynn, did you see that Jane showed up?
I did, Jane.
Okay, very good. Sorry, I was running late.
I think you take us to a quorum of the mental health board. I think so. Dr. Yuakima, I think if you want to call the meeting to order, I think we do have a quorum of mental health board members.
All right, I will call the meeting to order for the Wednesday, October 26, 2022, joint session of the CCMHB and CCDDB study session. Can I get a roll call?
Matt Hausman.
Here.
Daphne Mauer. Alexa McCoy.
Here.
Molly McClay.
Here.
Joe Omoasagie. Elaine Palencia. Kyle Patterson.
Here.
Jane Sprandl.
Here.
John Paul Yuakim.
Here.
Stephanie, oh, did you hear Joe?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Deb Roche. Georgiana Schuster.
Here.
Kim Fisher. Vicky Nicewonder. Ann Robyn.
Here.
All right, the next thing is, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for today?
No, moved.
Right here, a second.
I will second it. This is Georgiana.
All right, can I get a roll call, please?
Daphne Mauer. Alexa McCoy.
Here.
Molly McClay.
Yes.
Joe Omoasagie.
Yes.
Kyle Patterson.
Yes.
Jane Sprandl.
Yes.
Matt Hausman.
Yes.
Deb Roche. Georgiana Schuster.
Yes.
Ann Robyn.
Yes.
And John Yuakim, right?
Yeah.
Yes. All right, so the next item is citizen input and public participation. We can, we'll limit public participation, individual limit, individual public participation to five minutes. If anyone wants to make any comments, now is the time. All right, next thing on the agenda.
Hello, hello. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, hello, my name is Dana Rao, and I'm with a community, a conscious community connection. We is a organization that helps the, that go out, do outreach program, mostly in the homeless area, area like downtown, in CU home area. And we do a lot of feeding, clothing, and trying to get people back on track. And the latest thing I've been dealing with in far as homeless areas and communities, it's a lot of mental illness and drug addiction that's going on at the same time. And the problem we have is that the shelters, like, they're letting them in, but they're not providing no assistance for mental illness or a drug addiction. And it's like, they just like come in and lay down, and that's it, you know, they got to put some type of, help them with some type of structure in their life to, to get the people off the streets. And what a lot of people don't realize is that Champaign-Urbana is starting to be more and more homeless people in the area, and they're coming from all over, simply the fact, because the university, homeless people are traveling here, and the shelters be full of capacity where people can't even get in. And 99% of the people up there either have mental health or drug issues. And as long as, you know, we not providing any type of help for them, it's going to continue to be a same cycle. It's like, just come there, lay down, get up, and go. And I do a lot of in-house with them, I do this voluntary, I be there talking to them, I done been through some things in my life, and a lot of them just really need support or some help to get theyself together. And we just try to support them, and like, they don't feed them at the, they only eat one time a day in, at the soup kitchen, then after that, that's over with, and they, they open the doors at 8:30. So a lot of times, me and a few other people, we try to provide meals for them before they go to sleep, and try to encourage them with job opportunities, and give them information that can get them together, you know, and I, I do a lot of recovery, I used to work years at the Men's Safe House, which was a recovery house for men. And as I go up there, it's mostly people up there are on drugs, and they, they coming younger and younger and younger too, up there, and it's more women up there, and we even see college students from the university up there that, because I work at university, I even seen kids that's going through up there. So it's a lot of stuff going on, and I just think that with Champaign-Urbana, with all the resources we have here, it should be more help for the homeless people, because them the people that, people who don't want to be bothered, we don't want to deal with them. I'm not saying that they're not getting help, but it's, they should get more help with the mental illness and addiction, and that's basically what it is, you know, you try to help them, get them off their feet, get housing, and get structured where they gotta, you know, follow the direction to get theyself together. I ain't saying give it to them, but put it in a way where they can, you know, fight to get theyself together, because it's not going to be easy, but a lot of kids, a lot of them people, they want structure, but they have no way to, to take step by step to get there. And that's my concern, that I think that as people, we need to help people get closer to their goals. Like I said, they're young, they're women, it's becoming, but in the next couple of years, it's going to be a lot of homeless people in Champaign-Urbana, and they, people not paying attention, they sleeping under bridges, and it's all types of stuff is going on up there, and I, it's like one of my main homes where I be at, because I love helping people to get theyself together. And I can't do it just by talking to them and telling my love them, and, you know, give them a sandwich, give them a coat, give them stuff. It's, it's bigger than that, and they, they need structure, they need help. They need help where they just sleeping all around the shelter. When they can't get in, they sleeping, it's like, sleeping all around it. If you ever get a chance, go up there, and you will see them outside sleeping, if they think they can make it through the night, they outside, because now it's like, if, if they get there, it's so full that they can't get in. And I know they supposed to open up another township, supposed to open up another one, I think, so I don't know what's going on with that. But I'm just a person that's in the community with the people daily, and I'm just saying that I think that they need mental health, and it's a lot of drug addiction going on, they need counseling, they need support groups there, they need housing, they need jobs and stuff like that, they just, it's, it's just a whole process that it could be all in one, mental health, drugs, housing, you know, it should, it could be all one thing, where they just try to help people, you know, work their way up to the top. It does help, because I'm living proof of it. I'm living proof of it, that, which you put certain structures for certain people that it help. It's not going to help everybody, and everybody ain't going to want to do it, but there's going to be a lot of them out there that wants to help. So that's my, I had to say, and I just appreciate y'all listening to what I had to say, and y'all trying to help the people.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Um, actually, I'm going to ask a quick question. Damon, I put in the chat, I was wondering, did you say you're actually with an agency? Are you just a group of fellows that are trying to do the right thing? I missed that, and I apologize.
Okay, we, with Conscious Community Connection, we just a small group that's, that's a positive organization that's trying to help people in the community. First, we started off with helping with information, like, to like different information, so people can get help with certain things. A lot of people in the streets don't know about certain programs, they can get help with this, they can get help with that. So what we do is, we go out there and let them know that you can get help with housing, you can get help with this, you can get your, you know, try to get them in rehab, try to get on mental health, stuff like that. And then within the last couple of years, I decided to start collecting shoes and coats and stuff like that. Right, right now, we collecting coats, and then on Thanksgiving, we having, they having a dinner at the soup kitchen, and we handling our toiletries there, like mouthwash, deodorant, soap, hand sanitizer, deodorant, tissue, combs and stuff like that, and then every once in a while, we provide dinner for them at the, at the shelter. Because I say, once I, once again, at 10:30, 11, that's the last time they eat. And so by me doing that, us doing that, several other people come around. The people bring food up there, but now it's to the point where you got to go in there and talk to them, and treat them like humans, and stick with them, and talk to them, and fellowship with them, instead of just like, here, here's a food, and I know people appreciate that, but I think I can get close to them when I talk to them, when I feed them and clothe them, that's the way I can start talking to them about, you know, getting theyself together, or lining up, you know, and like I tell them all the time, the shelter is not for you just to live here. Shelter is here for you to get yourself together, get to the next step, to become who you, who God wants you to be. And I just think they just need more help, and a lot of people look over them, because simple fact, there's a lot of people out there in the streets that's using a system, getting over on people, and they look at the ones that, they look past the ones that really need the help. And like I say, it's growing with the homeless in Champaign-Urbana, and people not realizing it, and it's, you know, because they coming here, because I talk to them, like, where you from, where you from? They coming from different areas, just to come here, I don't know why, but they coming here, because lately, the shelters are being overfilled, and the last, some years ago, when we was doing, as we've been doing for a while.
Hi, Damon, I, I don't want to interrupt you, but we, we do need to admit the comments.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I know you're very passionate about this.
Yeah, I'm just a passion.
I love your energy, and you're doing great work. I'm glad you're helping.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm glad you're helping the homeless in our, our community, and, you know, if, if you can type in the name of your, your group in the comments, I think that would be helpful to the rest of us to maybe reach out to, to you guys in the future.
Okay, thank you so much.
I know, thank you for your comments. Were there any other participants that would like to make any comments? And just a reminder to please limit your comments to five minutes. All right, seeing none, we can go to the next section, which is the, just the president's comments. I guess I can go first. I just want to thank, you know, everybody for being here today. I know homelessness is something that touches a lot of people in the community. You know, it's something that, you know, as, as a mental health board, and that is something that a lot of people encounter throughout their, throughout the, a lot of people encounter in their life that they have the threat of homelessness, homelessness, and some people end up becoming homeless, and, you know, there's a lot of things, a lot of support systems in the community, but yet there's a lot of gaps as well, and so, you know, that being said, I'm interested and excited to hear about the presentations this afternoon. Well, leave the comments to Robin. Dr. Robin?
Yeah, I'll just say hello to everybody, and I just want to thank all of the participants for putting together your presentations, and thank our guests that just spoke. And thank you to all the board members that are here, and I am going to mute myself and take myself off video and just pay close attention to what's going on. So thanks to everybody.
All right, moving on to the next session is the study session, which is the Journey to a Comprehensive Shelter System, from pages three to 62. And then I'll let you guys take it from here, if I think Leon or Lynn want to.
I'll put up the outline. It's, I believe Bev Baker and Leon are going to lead this discussion.
All right, well, thank you. I will do my best here. Good evening, everyone. I'm Leon Bryson, Associate Director for Mental Health and Substance Use Disorders with the Champagne County Mental Health and Didi Developmental Disabilities Boards. And I just want to thank the Champagne County Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities Boards for providing the space and the opportunity to hold our joint study session today. I also want to send a special thanks to the United Way of Champagne County for partnering with us for what will be a fruitful discussion about the journey to a shelter system. And lastly, we want to sincerely thank the requested participants who has joined us today at the table. The purpose of the discussion is twofold, to bring together service providers, system leaders, and advocates to learn from each other and discuss the best practices on our journey to a shelter system. The second purpose is to create a comprehensive diagram of our current services and resources and the continuum of our service delivery system. Now, so with that, I will turn the mic over to Ms. Beverly Baker, Director of Community Impact with the United Way of Champagne County. The floor is yours, Bev.
Hi, everybody. Happy to be here tonight. Thank you for joining us. Really, what, what we want to do is open the floor for some great discussion, and tonight won't be the end, that is for sure. It really is an opportunity to learn and dig in a little bit deeper. We have a number of our community partners that are able to join us tonight as well, and to chime in and to share their, their knowledge and, and their concerns about what we have in front of us and in our community in terms of, of current shelter, as well as then looking further ahead through the continuum at, at sustainable housing for, for those who, who are ready to move into that environment. So what we really want to do, the packet that you had a chance to review before the meeting, and we want to thank our partners for putting together their, their slides, we asked for some very specific information. We have that really as, as homework and preparation for this meeting. We'll also have it available as a reference tool if we need to pull it up during our time together. And then we'll be using that information going forward as we work with our continuum of service providers to the homeless to look at the, the services that we have, to look at the true continuum, what we have, what we don't have, where the gaps are, and so we'll be working together with them. We've already had conversations this fall about taking a look at the system from a bigger picture. We're at a crucial time right now, a number of our partners here tonight have heard me say this, this fall, we're at a time with funds available through ARPA, through local funding opportunities, both the Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities Boards funding coming up this winter, United Way Community Essentials funding, and then the, the consolidated RFP around homelessness that the City of Champagne and the City of Urbana are, are working on as well. We have a, a unique opportunity to really look critically at our system and the services that we have available, and to try and strengthen the pieces that we have, and to fill in the gaps where we've had gaps for a long time. And so we need to harness this opportunity, and the study session tonight is part of that. And as I said, there'll, there'll be work moving ahead with the continuum, and we thank them for their leadership in this as well. So like I said, the slide deck that you have is really for preparation leading up to tonight's meeting as a reference tool for us, and then we'll be using it to help finish a document that our continuum will have access to going forward as, as we look at the system that we have and identify those gaps. So Leon, do we want to start with some questions?
I think we can do that. So during this summer, the continuum of service providers to the homeless reported a total of 102 households and 166 individuals were identified as homeless in Champagne County during the most recent point in, point in time count, which is up from 137 individuals identified through the count in January of 2022. What we know is, for any person in crisis, the first step is to stop the sinking movement and regain some control. So to start the discussion, the first question that I'd like to put on, you know, put out there goes something like this. Which should be addressed first? The root causes of homelessness, which we know are unemployment, affordable housing, poverty, domestic violence, addiction, and so on, or providing homeless people with permanent housing without barriers or preconditions? So is there anyone on at the table who's willing to take on this, this question, tackle this question? Board members alike.
This is Bethany Little with Win Recovery. Can you guys hear me? Okay, I just want to make sure. So this is a very hard question, of course, um, you know, for, for, from what my experience is, is that the root, although they need to be housed right away, the root is the most important thing. I found that if you, for individuals that suffer or, you know, have the challenges of mental health and substance use disorder, et cetera, if those are not treated, or those are not, are not at the forefront, when you give housing, you know, you don't give them the ability and the tools to be able to sustain and maintain that housing. And so a lot of times, if they're not getting those resources and services and understand how to navigate through the system and be able to have the, the full foundation of what it takes to be a productive citizen, and we just give them housing, then it's a, I find that, you know, people lose their vouchers. People are using while they're on their vouchers, you know, it, it's just a, it's just a continuing cycle. And so it's hard for me to say, of course, with the, you know, the high, the Maslow hierarchy, of course, the foundation is always going to be shelter and a roof over somebody's head. But that's why it's so important to make sure that those other resources and services are still being required. But that's why it's so important to make sure that those other resources and services are still being required to, um, for them to be able to focus on along with the help with the housing. And that's just my experience, so.
Thank you, Bethany. I think Carrie was, Carrie, uh, from Grow was next and then Claudia and then Jessica. I think you're on mute, Carrie.
I, I want to thank you guys for hosting this and I want to thank all the providers that are here at the table to be solution focused. I wanted to say that first. And, um, I agree with Bethany, but up to a point because I believe in housing first because the basic human needs, like right now, the, what I see going into, um, See You At Home with our peer-to-peer support group, and of course, we get there at nine, when See You At Home is, you know, closed. They don't open up again until noon to five for their drop-in center, which by the way, thank you guys for doing that. But the basic human needs, just finding a place to relieve yourself and go to the bathroom is, can be blocks away. That's unacceptable. You know, being able to wrap somebody with intensive case management at, while housing them would be, in my opinion, the most optimal solution to something because without housing somebody, they don't have, they can't even cook. They can't go to the bathroom. They can't shower. They can't, there's a lot of just basic things that we all take for granted that is not being met while they're in the street. And these are just basic human needs. And so, you know, I would like to see a system where housing first wrapped with intensive case management to meet all those other needs. And that's kind of how I feel.
Thank you, Carrie. Claudia.
Hi, um, I'm Claudia Lynn Hoff with Champagne County Healthcare Consumers. And, um, I agree with the comments. I think it has to be housing first with intensive case management to try to address all of those other issues because, um, we work with a lot of folks who are homeless and it's, it's very hard to maintain your medication, your medical appointment, even your eyeglasses, all of that kind of stuff, um, when you don't have your own place to be. And we end up having to spend a lot of time with, um, clients who are homeless, helping them get new prescriptions, new eyeglasses, um, helping them figure out when their appointment was supposed to be. There's just basically no stability for working on the issues that need to be worked on. So I, I think housing first, but with really intensive case management and not just case management for a year. Some people are gonna need case management for the rest of their lives. Um, so, and then just the one other comment I wanted to make is, um, I'll try to find the link for it, but there was an excellent Seattle Times article on the cause of homelessness. And basically the bottom line, um, when they reviewed the research and everything, is it has to do with the affordability of housing. Um, and some of the examples that they gave to prove their point is that you can look at a city like Detroit that has a very high poverty level, but it actually has a low homelessness rate because housing is affordable. Um, so I, I think it's really important to, you know, to sort of keep that in mind in the background. And when we start looking at solutions, I think we also need to start looking at, um, what can local government do to help, especially with developers who want to come in and build a lot of housing? What can we do to ensure that there are affordable housing units as part of that? Especially when they're getting, um, benefits from the cities or the county, et cetera. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thanks, Claudia. Jessica.
Hi, yes, this is Jessica McCann from CCRPC. Um, I think many of the, um, ladies here covered what I'd hope to share about housing first. The only thing that I would add in addition to the importance of housing first would be the service coordination and timeframe of that case management and the importance of critical time intervention when folks are exiting from institution, um, substance abuse, moving from any kind of institution or, um, I guess that covers it. Um, and then really, um, just those phases of supportive services. Um, and one thing that I think is extremely important in that housing-first model is just that harm reduction and then coordination of all the service providers. Um, and so we'll see at times that there may be intensive case management, but there's maybe a lack in that coordination of, um, the services that take place and things end up falling through the cracks. So I think just, just to add to that.
Thank you. I think we had a couple of comments, um, in the chat. Um, are Danielle, are you comfortable with speaking on that? And Julie?
Sure. I have a terrible cold, so I sound like a frog. Essentially, what we have seen, let me tell a story. There was a woman who was sleeping outside of a shopping center in Urbana. She was in a wheelchair. She slept in the cold. She had been there for a long time. Our office began to do, she was not, uh, able to communicate clearly with our staff members. Um, our office reached out and, uh, tried to figure out what's one thing that we could do to support her. She's had a battery for her wheelchair. We got her a battery with angel donor funds. It wasn't in the budget, but we used private donations and, um, we started to build a relationship. She was frightened to go to a hotel. She was afraid of being assaulted. She had been assaulted many times on the street. We continued to work with her and asked her which hotel she would be interested in staying in. She finally selected a hotel she was safe with. She moved into that hotel. She moved into our emergency housing program. We got her a voucher. She moved into, uh, a voucher, uh, subsidized housing in Urbana. And I saw her a year and a half later. She rolled up with a new wheelchair. She was totally lucid. She had great sunglasses on. She told me she was doing great and, um, showed me how her wheelchair could do fancy things. She was sixty-five dollars behind on utilities. After a year, I said, that's awesome. Let us pay for your utilities. We did that. That is just one of many examples of a person who you think you need to address their mental health issue first. You think you need to address their substance abuse issue first, but actually she needed housing first, then those other supports, right? It had the, all of those pieces had to come together, but housing, if you do not have housing, every single person at this table would be crazy, right? We would not be able, we would not be in our right mind if we're sleeping on the streets and exposed to the violence that that, um, suffers. So I would say housing first. That said, we want to make sure the cities understand and the community understands that we need affordable housing and that affordable housing is a high priority. They need to happen in tandem so that we don't, as a homeless prevention method. And we need rental assistance as well to fill gaps when people get behind. All of the rental assistance providers have used half of our budget in the first three months of this year. That's in my presentation, but essentially it's really important that we prevent homelessness. But once someone is homeless, it is a critical lifesaving public emergency that is immediate and must be addressed with that person as soon as possible.
Thank you for that, Danielle. Anyone else want to tackle that question? What I, what I'm hearing is, as I was taking notes, um, housing first is unconditional. It's quick and it's supportive. I hope that's, I hope I'm capturing that. If we have no other comments on this, I will, we will move to the next question.
Uh, real quick. Can you hear me? Yes. Um, I think housing is second to comprehensive case management, along with that housing and that the priority of housing is individual to the person based on their age, uh, physical illness, uh, danger experience with, uh, balance of various things on the street, et cetera, et cetera. That's kind of all I got.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Novak Nelson. So we need to know if we can have someone speak to the, and I think, I think Danielle kind of touched upon it, but can someone speak to the challenges with vouchers and landlords? And how can we get landlords to the CSPH meetings?
If I, if I can jump in there first and just say, I think engagement with the landlords and CSPH is critical. I don't know that the landlords would necessarily benefit from being at the CSPH meetings every, every month, but developing that, that relationship with CH, CSPH would be critical. Um, I just think there's a lot of stuff, um, that, that we talk about that, that they wouldn't be able to find, um, necessarily the value in, but understanding the players around the table and having that deeper partnership and being a part of that continuum, um, would absolutely be critical. So I just wanted to add that, in my opinion, that clarifying point. And Claudia, I know you were getting ready to say something and I just jumped on in there.
That's all right. Um, thank you. I, I think this is such a huge issue. And I, I guess the one thing, um, because basically every time I've worked with RPC, they've done a great job for our clients. Our clients end up getting vouchers. But a lot of times, um, it's just hard for our clients to find a place that will take the voucher. And, um, and I know some, some people have kind of like a small list of, um, of landlords that might be willing to take the voucher, but I don't think we have a comprehensive list. And I think one of the things that we really have to keep in mind for this particular part of the discussion is that within the city of Urbana, it is illegal to discriminate um, against renting to somebody on the basis of the source of payment. So, um, if somebody goes to an apartment that they're interested in renting and they, they say that they have a voucher from Regional Planning Commission, if the landlord says, no, we don't rent to people with vouchers, um, that is actually illegal. But just because it's illegal doesn't mean it doesn't happen. And so part of what needs to happen is that, um, those instances need to be reported and they need to be reported to the City of Urbana, to the, um, Human Rights Officer. And then, um, that office can work to educate the landlord and let them know that they cannot dis- discriminate on that basis. Um, but the other thing that they're not supposed to be able to discriminate on in the city of Urbana also has to do with, um, criminal, uh, criminal background. But people don't know this and when they have been discriminated against, they don't know what to do about it. And I think a lot of the landlords don't know that they're not allowed to do that within the city of Urbana. So I think there's definitely room for work that can be done on that side of it. Um, and I do agree with, uh, Beverly, Beverly's comments about, you know, landlords being at CSPH, but I think there should be a concerted effort to help engage and educate landlords and then hold them accountable, at least in the city of Urbana, for the ordinance. Thank you.
I think there's a question or no, a statement, a comment in the, uh, chat and I think Carrie, two, okay. All right.
Can I, real quick, I know, uh, when I used to do property management, Champagne County has an apartment association that, that landlords in Champagne County meet. I don't know at this point if it's monthly, bi-monthly, whatever, however they meet, but they do get together as landlords and they have an association that meet regularly. And I didn't know if anyone here was familiar with that. Um, but I do have their contact information, um, if anybody would be interested in reaching out to them.
There's a, there's a, a lot of discussion going on in the, uh, chat. Um, is Mr. Evans available to speak on this or I could read it for us if, if he's unavailable?
You're welcome to read it. I mean.
Uh, okay. So, uh, Chris, Chris Evans is saying, um, no more tax breaks for developers unless they provide emergency units for homeless families first, uh, homeless individuals second. Housing first, housing first. Um, instead of striving to have the best college basketball and football teams, let's end homelessness in Champagne, Urbana. We have too many landlords discriminating against source of income, housing vouchers and Urbana is not enforcing our human right ordinance. We may have to raise fines and penalties and allow for those discriminated to sue for damages. As of January first, um, uh, throughout the state, it will be illegal to refuse to accept vouchers. See the Illinois law. And then, uh, Ms. Lisa Wilson says she completely, completely agree about the no tax breaks unless the developer bills affordable housing as well. And we have others who are chiming in. Please, um, if you want to speak up, feel free to do so. Stephanie Burnett, I would like the information for the landlord group. Uh, okay.
Yeah, Carrie, I think if you, this is Bev from United Way. If you could send the current contact information that you have for the landlord group, that would be great. Um, CSPH has presented to them, as I said in the chat in the past, it's been several years, like a couple of years even before the pandemic. And that leadership, you know, um, changes every so often. So it'd be good to have current information. Um, and I think what we encountered in the past was, and again, this is something that we've talked about and we've heard it again, case management and service coordination. Landlords are, I think, would be more willing to, to accept the vouchers, what we've heard. If they know that there's somebody, some place, some organization, a name, a business card, a website that they can go to and say, I'm concerned about this tenant, um, seeing strange behavior. I, they're getting behind on their rent, there are funky smells coming from the apartment. I'm concerned about damage and whatever the case may be. Um, if there's, uh, uh, an, a, a program, an organization, services of some kind behind each of those vouchers, um, I, I think we would start to make some headway with landlords. And I believe, I don't want to speak for Housing Authority, but I believe that they're starting something with landlords and providing some, um, almost some safety and security, um, support, um, for them as well. So again, I don't want to speak to that. I don't know enough, but, um, I think I've seen that information and we've heard about, uh, that that's on the horizon. And that would be a great if they, when that ball's rolling, to see how that's going and continue to look at that. I think that would be a wonderful, um, action step that we can take.
Thank you. I think Braden, um, Mr. Belcher had his hand raised earlier. I don't know if he.
Hi, yes, thank you. I just wanted to highlight, um, what I put in the chat. Um, so as Danielle pointed out, as of July one, um, discrimination based on source of income will be illegal in Illinois. Um, and Hope Fair Housing is a, um, is a nonprofit based out of Chicago. They do really wonderful work. Um, if you, if anyone here on this call has clients that believe they were discriminated against based on source of income, um, I encourage you all to reach out to, to, uh, Hope Fair Housing. They can investigate, they can provide advocacy, they can work with clients and tenants to, to come to resolutions. Um, I, they also have a lot of resources on, um, you know, this new law change that will be going into effect and what that will mean for tenants and also for landlords. Um, but I will also say that, um, just in terms of the continuum of service providers to the homeless, um, landlord outreach is, um, going to be a focal point of our strategic planning process. We understand how vitally important it is to this, to the issue of, of homelessness and affordable housing in the community. And so, um, as we are beginning to work on our new three-year strategic plan, um, for the continuum, um, that aspect is going to be very central. Thank you.
No, thank you. Uh, I think, uh, Mr. Housman had, uh, his hand raised.
Yeah, thanks, Leon. Um, love the comments of our, and I really liked, uh, what Bev said and kind of wants to bring in because a little bit, for a little bit there, I was getting a little discouraged because I felt like. a little bit, for a little bit there, I was getting a little discouraged because I felt like, what can we do as a mental health board or a DD board? Um, to address these issues. Um, but I loved what Bev said about using the case management to kind of help build those bridges with landlords and such. So I really would love to hear more of those ideas as we're going forward with this conversation tonight about how us as the mental health board or the DD board uh can really help with um some of these issues. Yeah, and unfortunately, a little bit, I was worried when we were talking about uh housing availability and affordability a little bit out of our wheelhouse, so uh, but would love to hear more about what we can specifically do to help.
I think Ms. Stephanie Burnett had her hand up, and then Ms. Jessica McCann.
Hi, I'm Stephanie with the Housing Authority, and I just wanted to touch on what Bev was saying. Um, what we found is the difficulty is, I think a lot of landlords don't really understand how the voucher works sometimes, so they're kind of like, I don't want to deal with that. But we have been having landlord forums. We had one, I believe, back in September, either end of August, beginning of September, just to go over like the new rules coming up in the new year and just to really explain how, at least with the Housing Authority, the process, how the voucher works, what it entails, what the landlord's responsibilities are, as well as the tenants, as someone mentioned, if they do have um any issues that arise with tenants, how to report that to us so that we can um handle things on our end. Um, so, and we have another landlord event coming up in November, Friday the seventeenth or eighteenth, I forget which day, but it's on a Friday coming up in November. And um, sorry, I had another point, but I lost my train of thought. It was something someone said that I had a response to, but um, yeah, with the difficulties, I think it just, it's just fear of the unknown in some cases, but um we, once our families are housed, they still have some of those supportive services to back them up. And I think that's where it comes in, where they're low income, how can they maintain their rent, even if it's their portion of the rent? And especially with the pandemic, a lot of landlords lost a lot of money, you know, due to people not paying their rent during that time. So I think it's just a, it's a difficult time right now, but like we said, we established those relationships. I think we can get the ball rolling again, and I feel like our landlord informations have been successful. Um, additionally, we are hiring a new person on staff to help with our supportive services side of things, but they will also act as a housing navigator. So they will be the ones trying to get in top contact with, recruiting new landlords, trying to get a list of available units that are available for those with vouchers. And so that is definitely information. We do, we do not mind sharing with other organizations, but people are looking for affordable housing as well. So we, that's something that we kind of went away from in the past, but we want to establish that again. We're just getting a list of affordable housing availabilities, even through private landlords that accept vouchers and just having that resource available. And we also provide landlord incentives, so that's been helping us as well. So if they take someone on the voucher, they earn so much money. Um, if that person moves and they re- release a, a unit to a voucher holder, they earn incentives that way. And so we're really trying to sweeten the pot to get these landlords on board with us.
Thank you, thank you for that. So uh Jessica and Dr. John and Melissa, you all are next. Melissa Corrigan.
Sure, um, thank you. I just wanted to piggyback on what um has already been said about the importance of the landlord connection and then just share some of the basic things that are really helpful in case management that though um RPC and Rosecrance and um DSC, many of our helpful partners are doing specialized housing stability case management. I think there's ways supportive case managers can still leverage some of those connections. Um, and some of those things that may be helpful that we see are just basic tenant readiness training. Um, so looking at things like how to communicate with the landlord, how to step back and take a breath before addressing the issue that came about, um housekeeping, um budgeting, bill paying, um and then just sort of being that um liaison or connector between landlord and tenant. Um, sometimes we find just not being um able to be reached by phone or um things of that nature uh for tenants, just being that connector piece even. And so if there's case managers, even through other um supportive programs, I think that we can sort of bridge some of those gaps in case management. Um, of course, we would love to see an increase in uh supportive mental health and behavioral health case management, and that is a gap um and a need. Um, but in the meantime, even that peer support, I know like Damon was mentioning in the beginning, just doing some of those things as we make those connections in the community are important. Um, and then I know someone also asked a question in the chat that I was going to answer on the topic about payment timing of permanent supportive housing vouchers. Um, and I can say that those payments are made um at the time that rent is due in a monthly subsidy. So I don't know if that answers the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you know, um, as someone just, you know, listening to everything being said, uh, I, I do, as a pediatrician, deal with families that uh have trouble finding housing. And luckily, like, when they come into the office, uh, one of the things we do have is a social worker. And I think from a mental health board perspective, you know, piggybacking off what Matt was saying, you know, I think one thing that we can do as a board, if uh there's agencies out there, is fund programs to help with the social work uh case management perspect- uh portion of uh transitioning people from homelessness, homelessness into homes. Uh, you know, from my perspective, the, the big issues that I see um uh is, is affordable housing. You know, people can't move somewhere cheaper if there's nowhere cheaper that exists. They can't apply for federal assistance if there's not enough funding that exists. I think about one in four people that apply for funding and are, 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 are eligible for funding, actually are able to apply and, and get it. I think when I looked it up, the average wait time is about two and a half years. I don't know if in our area it's any better. Um, uh, but that's from what I saw. And then, you know, a lot of things that renters deal with is uh if there is problems with their landlord and uh they want to complain, you know, landlord can threaten eviction on them. And if, if a person gets uh even just the complaint of eviction and, and doesn't uh wins the court case, they have that on their record and uh, and that can prevent them from ever getting a rental unit again. Um, landlords can, will, will, will make other excuses, even if, you know, we say that it's illegal to refuse based on the source of payment or criminal background. Landlords will do what's in their fiduciary interest, what's in their best interests monetarily. Uh, we'll have local landlords that have empathy and will want to help uh people in their community. But from a larger landlord's perspective, ones that are national uh management companies, that won't, is not likely to occur. And so um, you know, I, I do see a lot of obstacles that we face um that we have faced. And I think in May of this year, I think how the median housing uh rental uh rent passed $2,000. And uh, I, I think they even said in, in, in the US, there's not a single county um right now where someone making minimum wage can afford a, a, a decent two-bedroom uh apartment. And in the last thirty years, the Harvard Joint Center for Housing Studies showed that rental available units grew by thirteen point three million, but at the same time, at the lowest end of the market, uh decreased by three point seven million units. Meaning that, you know, there's more units available, but it's just not affordable. And what we do see is now we have um artificial intelligence uh software from, there's one from like Texas called Real Page that ProPublica published. Um, there's an investigation, now there's a lawsuit even in Seattle or in uh, in San Diego that's uh being based from there, where AI is basically maximizing the rents of uh for, for landlords. And they're even pushing it above the normal market prices because um they're aggregating all the data and they're, and the lawsuit's saying that they're colluding with all the data, with all the, with the landlord. So there's like a place in, in um Seattle, for example, where uh seventy percent of the homes in that area are controlled by just a few management companies, but they all use that AI software. So even though they're not directly colluding with each other, they're all using the software to share the same data and therefore can drive their prices up. And the AI tells them to raise their prices, so they have a lower occupancy, but they're still making more money because people that can pay will pay. And so then they end up making more money and having more vacant rental units. Uh, and so I think we may see more of that in bigger cities, hopefully not in Champaign. But again, there, there are a lot of obstacles that we are facing. And, and, you know, again, hopefully I would rely on local landlords to have the empathy, which I, I think they do, uh to take more of these, uh more people that have vouchers. And I think hopefully with what people are saying, that, that will happen. And again, from the mental health board perspective, I think uh applying or supplying uh um funding for social work, uh management, uh case management, I think it's probably the most beneficial thing that we can do.
Thank you so much.
So I think uh for us, uh Melissa, with you at home, uh part of our strategic uh plan and, and thank you, so many of you have helped us develop that. Um, you've sat uh with us in many meetings as we've um discussed that and tried to figure out what that is. Uh, but I, I think for us, a large part of it, so many of our clients, when they come to us, they are several steps uh behind even thinking about getting a voucher. And, and part of that is just some, some very basic things that they don't have, for example, an ID, a birth certificate. Um, so what, what we want to do is um have our clients, first of all, in the right environment. And part of this is also in my slides, so I won't go into it too in depth, but trying to move people out of that um non-congregate environment, so that right away, even though maybe um they're not in a house, so it's not a discouragement of housing first, but just a recognition that, you know, the way the system is set up, um they may not be able to go right into a home, but we want them into um as much of a home-like environment, a trauma-informed environment as they can possibly be as they move through this. And I think part of our um case management goals is to work with each client that comes in and to begin to address the points of instability. And again, that's going to range all the way from, you know, addressing the basic needs of, I, I don't have an ID all the way to some of the bigger things that we're talking about, such as mental health and substance abuse. So I think the, the idea is that they move through that program when they get to the place where they can get the voucher and they found the place, some of those points of instability are addressed. Um, we've talked about, uh, you know, can we have a, you know, a graduate, you know, from a program like ours or, or similar where when a landlord sees that they've went through, you know, this process where again, they're practicing their life skills. They've um, you know, have a, you know, medical care provider, a primary care physician, a, all of those points of instability have been addressed. Will they, will they feel better about, you know, accepting the voucher? And I'm not saying they don't maybe even need case management after that, but that's one of the goals of what we're working on with our case management team is how do we, after moving through the system, address those points of instability?
Thank you, Melissa. Wow, so this was just, this was just one question and everybody took off on it, and I love, love the, the energy. So let me see if I can just uh recap just a few things here. Housing first is essential. Uh, intensive case management is a must. Landlords must be part of the journey to a sustainable shelter. Uh, the Mental Health Board can work with a CSPH, and also there are several, yes, Ms.
Just, just, there is a sort of a side conversation, and some of the suggestions are things that the Mental Health Board is already funding and prioritizing, and there's a question about policy agenda. Um, I don't know if that means Mental Health Board policy, but I can drop into the chat a link to our policy documents if that would be helpful. There's just a lot of sidebar that's really important. But, you know, like there might be really easy ways to address those. I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but anyway.
You're fine, um, because it is a challenge to try to keep up with what's going on in the chat and, and actively listen to the great comments. Um, so uh let me go into this next question. Um, we hear this often. Um, a lot of agencies uh we work with talk about the workforce shortage being a crisis. And it affects everyone, especially uh for individuals and families that depend on some of the life-saving services. So with that in mind, can someone uh share some strategies they found useful in their agency for retaining and recruiting staff? If we're gonna do this hard work, this intensive case management, we gotta have the staff. Is there anyone on this call can, that can share some strategies, some tips for how they have recruited? And most importantly, retain great workers, great staff? Because if we're gonna, if we're, if we're gonna move, move the, the pendulum, we have to have people to move it. So this is the, the hundred dollar question that I've thrown out there. Jessica.
Well, if I had the perfect answer to this question, then there wouldn't be any vacancies at RPC, but that's not the case. Uh, but one thing that I will say is that um that stands out the most um just for me as uh, as a leader, I would say with staff is having the same trauma-informed approach to some degree with your staff that is taking place with the clients you are, are working with or the, the people that we're working with. Everyone is and has been impacted um by the pandemic. Everyone's mental health is at a different place um than maybe it has been at other times. And so I think taking that same relational approach, um looking at flexibility um uh and just being a supportive human, I think is something that is incredibly important to retention. Um, and I would love to hear all of the tips on recruitment and, and everything else that anyone might have.
Thank you, Jessica. I think there is, so as Lynn pointed out, um, there is a lot of chat going on in the, a lot of discussion going on in the uh chat. Uh, I think Carrie, you had a question, and then Becca, uh, you're next.
Well, I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of what Jessica uh referenced. Being with Grow, I have been either volunteering and/or working for this organization for over twenty years. And so the thing that kept me involved in an organization was very strong leadership. That we have a motto in our organization, whether it's our leadership or our staff, that you must have a missionary spirit but an educated heart. And all the way throughout the entire structure of our program, we practice that. And there has been times when either the staff or even the leadership, maybe going through something and, you know, trauma-informed care, you know, you, everybody kind of refers to things differently, but without strong leadership, you have to understand that we are all in this together and we all experience our own issues, both personally and professionally. And you have to be able to support one another because you're all in the same boat and you're all oriented in the same direction. And so in all the different trials and tribulations um throughout our experience in Grow, my God, we had a million-dollar budget and now we're down to hardly nothing. And we were from stem to stern in the entire state of Illinois, and we have really come down to uh significantly less. And so just providing that peer-to-peer support is what we do. And you have to be able to see the human being in front of you, whether that's staff, leadership, or the clients that we. And you have to be able to see the human being in front of you, whether that's staff, leadership or the clients that we serve, which is why we're all here. I just wanted to say that and I, and I've been very fortunate in my other role too of where I work. To have extremely strong leadership and it's made all the difference in me wanting to stay everywhere I've ever been.
Thank you, Carrie. Uh, Becca and then Bethany. I think you're muted, uh, Becca.
Thank you. Um, so I'm Becca Obuchowski with Community Choices. Um, this is something that I have thought about a lot and I, I really want to echo. Um, what you said, Jessica, and some of the comments that you made, um, in the chat, Danielle. I think that, um, we've, we've had a pretty good, um, track record of. Of finding and retaining good staff at Community Choices, although we are a smaller agency. Um, and I think that the idea of that sort of relational approach with, with your staff and making sure that they feel like they are part of. Both like the mission and the individual sort of choices that go into how you support somebody is really critical. Um, giving people the opportunity to like voice what they think could work, um, with the people that they are working with the most closely. I mean, they're the, they're the people that are, you know, figuring out like, what is it that this person needs? What is it that they want? What is going to work best for them? Because they know them, they see them every day. Um, and so letting that, letting, or making sure that there's like a. A pathway for that information to come back to leadership and for that to sort of influence how your programs run, how your organization runs, what you value. And, and what you're prioritizing, I think really helps people be heard. I mean, and that is, I mean, that's what my staff has told me, has been really helpful. Um. And I think that just like making sure like people have a voice too and like, well, like what, you know, be honest and saying like, hey, I can't give you everything. I can't pay you as much as you deserve, but like if, if there are pieces that you need, like come and tell me and then. Do what you can in a position of leadership to make those things happen. And if you can't, be honest with people about it. Um, I think that those things have been, um, have been really helpful. Um, and, and what you said too about like. You know, the people that, that are serving other people often also have, um, trauma that they're experiencing from. Um, from the work that they're doing and making sure that like there is space to both sort of, um, reflect with their coworkers about that, about the things that they're experiencing. As well as like having the flexibility with the organization for people to be able to take care of themselves.
Thank you for that, Becca. Um, if you can, can you, um, provide us with a couple of your slides? Uh, myself and, uh, Bev, I don't know if I received your, um. Your PowerPoint slides so that we can include it in the, um, the diagram. Thank you.
See, are, is Community Choices providing services to homeless people?
Um, we are often trying to keep people out of being homeless and sometimes not always. I ideally, if we're, if we're able to be successful, we are not supporting people who are homeless, but it is not, um, it's definitely something that comes up. People who are living very close to homelessness.
I would say, don't, you don't need to submit slides, the, you know, that was for the board packet. I thought we were going to have some brief presentations, but. This discussion is fine, but, but you know, just for the sake of time, if we could maybe stick with the people who provided slides.
Oh, sorry.
Gotcha. Uh, Bethany.
I was just gonna say, um, you know, I, I realize that every organization is different. And so when recovery is a peer-led. You know, organization. And so we, we, uh, serve as formerly incarcerated substance, uh, recovery, mental health. And it's all led by myself, which those are all things that I struggle with. And so, um, being a smaller organization. And in the midst of growing, we have the ability to make sure that, um, that we break the barriers of employment. For individuals that have, uh, a struggle finding employment because of background or because of their, their, uh, mental instabilities and stuff. And so, um, we also make sure that we try to get grants that allow us to either give stipends to individuals that are in. Our home to try to prepare them for the workforce or, um. Ha, get grants and funding to be able to re-employ them as they stay in our home, getting them ready to, um, you know, maintain and sustain. Uh, that foundation independently. And so, um, I know, I know, uh. That there's a lot of organizations on here that have been, you know, going for many, many years and are, you know, uh, intertwined with the bureaucracy. Of whatever your policy says in regards to the criminal background check and everything. And so I believe, I truly believe that, um, it's. About changing, you know, changing those things and, uh, changing the narrative and everything that comes behind it. I, uh, got. I got my master's degree in, um, clinical, um, mental health. And I graduated and because of my background, I wasn't able to get a position with the organization actually on here. And so, and it was all because of my background. And so that's where, of course, my passion comes from, but there's a lot of me out there. And so, you know, breaking, breaking the, um, breaking that is really important, I believe, is, uh, peer-led. It's, I, I think that's the most important thing, um, to be able to help people that are struggling with the same thing. So intersectionality, trauma-informed. Gender, you know, specific, uh, all of those things are very important. And so, um. It creates a holistic environment that makes a difference in somebody being successful and not, so.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Bethany for sharing. Are you all ready for one more question? Or do we want to pause? Any, any, uh, outstanding questions going on? Concerns before I go to the next question. All right. If I hear none, then we'll go on. If we could develop a real-time homelessness database for Champaign County, what would it look like? Anyone want to take on that, take the risk of answering that question? A real-time homelessness database for Champaign County, what would that look like?
I'm looking for my coordinated intake and, um, HMIS friends to just jump in there.
So I think Lynn and, and Joe are having trouble keeping themselves, okay, separate. So no, no.
I think, Leanne, I think Jessica has her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jessica. Thank you.
I can share, um, just on the perspective of, uh, our community's current, um, homeless management information system. Database, um, I think that database, uh, from a coordinated entry perspective. And all of the projects included in coordinated entry for permanent housing, um, we are coordinated across the community. So, um, anyone experiencing, um, homelessness who has gone through the coordinated entry. Intake process, um, their information is entered into HMIS or homeless management information system. Usually within forty-eight hours. Um, and then any project that's participating in a long-term housing project. Such as rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, um, and some emergency shelters. Um, also, I think most actually emergency shelters here within the county are, are now within HMIS. So I think right now we are, um, we've done a lot of work together as a community to get to where we are with HMIS. And I think, um, there's been some really great buy-in from our partners, um, who are, who are entering into HMIS. So at any moment, we could run a report at this time with our participating partners to see, um. Who is receiving what services, who's registered with the centralized intake project, um, and et cetera. I think. And I'm sure Melissa, um, I don't want to volunteer you Melissa, but may be able to speak to you or if there's any other. Shelter providers. I know that that can be a challenge, um, how emergency shelter stay is defined in HMIS. Because it's sporadic, um, and it changes. Um, and so I don't have quite as much experience. With the nightly shelter entry, um, but I know that there are absolute great efforts to, um, to get those entries in and keep those going. Um, and then I know that the shelter, um, that is currently in the progress of, um. And process of opening, um, is also involved in HMIS and will be, uh, figuring out a system for entry as well. So I don't know if that helps provide some context, um, to where we, what we currently have.
So the system is already in place. Um, is there? Do we need to make adjustments to it? Do we need to, is there something that's missing from the system that we? Need to bring to the table, um?
You know, the only thing that's really, um, I would say it's not a very descriptive system. So it's not a case noting system. There's not, you're not going to see any kind of qualitative data. Um, it's really a, um. Project entry, project exit and update. Um, there are other factors that are helpful to see in the system. So, um, what benefits that person may have obtained during their time in the project. Um, mostly related to, uh, medical insurance, income, those various things. Um, and it's, it is a way for us to track exit to permanent housing. So I would say probably the case management. Denoting or communication piece, it would be the only thing, um. And then, you know, just the challenges of connecting within, uh, community that's often nomadic, I think. But otherwise, those are the only two challenges I can, can think of.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. Um, Claudia will take your response and then I will pass it over to the board. For questions and comments and things of that nature.
Okay, um, yeah, just real quick. I, I, I was trying to find this, but I can't find it right now, but when I do, I will send it out. But there is actually a, a, a model for, that some communities are using for tracking homelessness and. Um, services provided and, um, housing, rapid housing. And they're all communities that have committed to the value of having homelessness be brief and rare. And I can't remember for the life of me right now what the system is, is called. Um, but there is a system in every community that agrees to participate in this, um, uh, model program would, would use this system. So I will try to find it. I don't know if I can do it during this meeting, but oh, maybe Lynn's familiar with it.
You know, it's, it's been a few years, but I think that, are, are you talking about something that Corporation for Supportive Housing was doing? Through grants to communities? It's been maybe ten years. Does that sound right to you?
No, I think this is something different. And I think that, um, Houston, uh, Texas has been participating in it. And there was a, a big write-up on them and that's kind of where I learned about it, but, um, I was trying to look for it during this discussion and I haven't been able to find it. But I will keep looking.
Thank you. And I'm gonna, I have, I just, I have one quote I have to say, because it's been burning. In my, in my spirit for a while now and, um, it goes something like this, all things are bound together, all things are connected. Our very survival is connected to the survival of others. We are all interconnected and thank you all for your participation in our discussion. I will turn it over to. The chair. And, uh, again, I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing and the, and the participation in our discussion today. And, uh, look forward to our ongoing conversations and collaboration. So thank you.
Or maybe any board members who have questions or comments at this point.
I'll just say, you know, it's, it's very expensive to rent. Um, it's, if you could get. A down payment for a house, your, your cost would be, would be cut in half. And I know when I went from renting to owning. My, my monthly cost for my living expenses was halved. And it, it, it seems like. You know, renting is just a way to stay in, in, in poverty. If there was almost a way to like rent to own, you know, for people, that would have been, that would be so nice. And I, um, and I, I was reading about the, the mini, the mini shelters or the mini homes. Uh, neighborhood and I, I wish there was someone to, um, talk more about that kind of initiative. Um, if there was someone from the Healthy Beginnings or Carl program or someone who was part of that.
Oh, the, the person you want is Claudia. This is, this is Claudia's brain child, you know, so, and, and we at Carl are, you know. Helping to support in whatever ways we can here, but that, this is totally Claudia. So Claudia.
Thank you. Uh, is it, is it okay to go ahead? Okay, um, so, um, thank you, Juliana, and, um, thank you, doctor. So, um, we are. Champaign County Healthcare Consumers is working with Carl and the University of Illinois and we will be actively searching for more and more partners. But, um, we are planning to build a tiny homes village, um, for, um, to house. Uh, to have about thirty homes for people who are homeless and specifically, this would focus on. What we're referring to as the hard-to-house homeless population and also medically fragile. And, um, what I mean by hard-to-house are like, um, some of the folks who have the hardest time, you know. Uh, they have the most complex needs, um, they just have a hard time making it and working with the systems that we currently have in place. And, um, earlier, um, the doctor was talking about, or somebody was, I don't remember, but about if you get an eviction. On your record, it's virtually impossible to find another apartment. And I had actually worked, um, probably now a couple of years ago. With some folks who I was trying to help with housing vouchers and things like that. And a couple of my clients got evicted. Um, they were just not ready to be living in a, in an apartment. It wasn't a good setting for them. They felt isolated. And that added to their trauma. And then, um, as many of you have said and experienced, they ended up sort of behaving inappropriately. You know, in the apartment setting. And it just didn't work. And the thing is that if somebody has a failure there. In, in the form of an eviction, good luck finding housing in this community. And so, um, what we are proposing to do. Is to create a tiny homes village and, uh, where people could live. Some people might live there permanently. Some people might live there, you know, two to three or more years, but with very, very intensive case management. Um, and in partnering with Carl, we would have innovative, um, medical technologies in some of the homes. So, uh, just as an example, if somebody has congestive heart failure, for example, they might weigh in at their home. There might be a scale where they can weigh in. And then the data is sent to their medical provider. And if it's noted that all of a sudden they've gained a lot of weight, that could be a medical emergency and, um, and those issues could be addressed. But, um, part of the reason that we also wanted to do this is because we know that people who have been. Either incarcerated for a very long time or chronically homeless for a very long time, a lot of times they have. Many pent-up healthcare needs that will shorten their lives. And so the sooner that they can get care and get housing and, and perhaps stabilized, they might be able to live healthier. And live a little bit longer. Approximately seventy percent of people who have been chronically homeless. And then become housed tend to die within two and a half years of having achieved homes. Or having received or being housed. And so this tells you that this population is very, very fragile medically. And they might not know it. But anyway, so this is something that we are working on. It would be also a place where if people are homeless. And they have pets, they could have their pets with them because we know that this is some, something that also sometimes keeps people out of shelters. Is if they can't take their pet with them. And I personally cannot blame them for that. Um, for a lot of people, it's their pet that helps keep them alive, helps keep them going. Um, the other thing is that, um, the homes would be. The homes would be built in a way where there would be. Having a a deck or a patio is really, really important to kind of help extend the living space, because a lot of people really feel the need to be able to access. Outdoors very, you know, easily. And it's also, you know, can be a healing sort of thing. So it's something that we're working on. The land has been donated. So we do have land. I'm not sure that I'm at liberty to say where it is yet, but. We do have land donated. And so we're working on that. And then healthcare consumers, my organization would help provide the case management. And some of those services on site. And of course, we would have, you know, Carl and other providers involved. And so I'll I'll stop there. But. Basically, the the idea for it, this is before I knew that there are a bunch of these models all over the country. There are a lot of tiny homes models, you know, for for housing homeless folks, but they are just as varied as the communities that have them. So for example, like some of the communities in Texas and California, they have tiny homes, but those homes don't have their own kitchens or bathrooms. These would have their own kitchens and bathrooms. They wouldn't just be like little sheds for people to live in. And so but the idea came out of seeing what seemed like a gap in our current system for people who really. For whom the voucher system and living in an apartment just doesn't work for them. You know, and and that might be a temporary thing, but it might be a few years sort of thing, or it might be a permanent thing. So that's where that idea came from.
I follow a question on that, Claudia, and that kind of goes to what Dr. Yokeam said about the rental. Is there any kind of a model with that that you're looking at? Where it's a path to ownership? For some of these families at the of the tiny homes?
That is entirely possible. I'll be very honest with you and just tell you that that the model that we're looking at is sort of evolving as we. Interact with more and more people like people in this group. Because originally, we were looking at, you know, people could stay there two to three years. And then the idea is then they would get permanent housing someplace else. But as we talk to more and more people, we also realize that. For some people, this might need to be their permanent home. And so those are issues that we are exploring now. It is entirely possible. Right now, where we have kind of landed is that. There will probably be some homes that are permanent homes for people and in others that maybe, you know, they're there for a while that get vacated. We can move somebody else in. What we do know is that we do not want to destabilize anybody by making them leave at like three years, you know, so. And then depending how it goes, we may be able to set up. You know, more tiny homes or tiny home villages, you know, throughout the community. So that so that that is a possibility. Part of the reason that we were looking at bill at a village rather than like scattered site housing. Is just frankly, because of the intensive, intensive work that has to happen with. A population with very, very complex needs. So. We're open to possibilities and to suggestions for sure.
I could also toss in here too, you know, the it gets into also the affordability, you know, of homes and. I'm very grateful for another partnership that Carl's been in now for a while with Housing Authority, where we did donate some of the homes that we own around our campus over there in Urbana. To really help, we saw a lot of the pregnant moms that we've been serving with our high intensity, healthy beginnings, home visiting services where we've got nurses, we have social workers, we got early childhood educators. Counselors coming into the homes, you know, working with moms. And I'll just say their outcomes have been really extraordinary. Very, very good, you know, through the service. But by offering that stable home, you know, getting those homes to the Housing Authority, they've capped the rent at five hundred dollars a month for these families, and they put a rent into escrow. So when these families do move out, they're able to to have all this money back, you know, in there. And they've helped, you know, put their arms around them with their move to work programming to help, you know, stabilize them from an economic standpoint as well. And I think like at this first year, we just got the report, each family has about thirty eight hundred dollars already in. You know, an account as well. And but it's been a win, win, win situation because they've also had youth build, you know, very involved in in helping to, you know, do the renovations. And we helped with some of those renovations. But it really then gave. Some training, you know, for a huge need and a huge gap in our community. And then families had a stable place. And when we look at how they were doing before going in and how they were doing after it, you just can't even compare, you know, the situation. You know, in there. So we definitely believe in, you know, doing what we can. But to go along with this, I just want to throw out if there's, and I know it's political, I know it, you know, I mentioned it in another meeting that many of you were at. But if there's any way that we can get, you know, rent down for these families, you know, then. We're not chasing people with food boxes and chasing people with clothing and chasing people with these other things that they can't afford out there, you know, and it really, really does start with that affordable home, you know, to be in. But we know that health, you know, equates to having stable housing and food on the table. And. We've learned very quickly that if we don't have those two things, then nothing else can matter. Because again, it goes back to Maslow, like everybody said, you know, here earlier as well. So Claudia, thanks for bringing your thoughts forward, you know, and being very innovative. It really does take all of us leveraging. The little bits of resources that we can offer, you know, to to do some of these impactful things for sure and to try new things. You know, so just thank you. And thank you to the Housing Authority too. I just really want to give a shout out to them because they're very open to, and I don't know if there's anybody on here. From from Housing Authority, but they're very open to doing some very innovative, different things also with the community. Now it's dead silent. I was going to say too, just another little thing too, to be aware of. We're also in a, if there's. Because sometimes the conditions in your home also leads to bad health outcomes. Which then also leads to people not having money, you know, to live on and such like that too. That there is an opportunity. We have healthy homes. So for people that are in a home that are are low income and perhaps struggling and just trying to make it a healthier environment. That we do have a healthy homes pilot and thanks to help from RPC and other groups and HUD for getting the funding in here. U of I is we're engaged in in some research, seeing how families do before and after if there's asthma in the home. And then they are eligible to get those free renovations and repairs in there too. So I know we're talking about homelessness, but sometimes, you know, your housing conditions and your health and everything else can also lead down that pathway. So. Just wanted people to have that awareness that there is healthy homes dollars that are available to people in this community, anyone in Champagne County. That's low income, you know, just as long as you got asthma or some reactive airway in your home, you are eligible, you know, for this this funding and for this particular. Initiative as well. And it's very minimal. It's looking at how how did you do? How was your control before? The mitigation work is done and then looking at how are you doing afterwards? So just wanted to have that awareness too.
If I can just add one more thing about the tiny home village. One of the other reasons that we envision this is also because of the need for accessible homes. For people who have disabling conditions. And. We saw, there was a period of time when healthcare consumers had a small grant from the city of Urbana where we were helping to. House medically fragile homeless folks in motels because they weren't able to stay at shelters and things like that. And even finding motels. With enough accessible rooms and things like that was really, really challenging. And the other thing is that we also. Like I could work with somebody for a period of a year helping them. And if they had been chronically homeless. You know, you you could see the impact on their health, you know, over time. And so. That's part of the design of these homes is to ensure that they will be made accessible, like. For wheelchairs or also if somebody has to use medical equipment. For example, you know, oxygen and. You know, C F A P machines and, you know, all of the constellation of things that people often need. But that was also part of part of the impetus is the lack of accessible. Housing in our community for people who have disabling condition. Thank you.
Hi, this is Jennifer Carlson with the City of Champagne. And I just wanted to share with the group that. The City of Champagne does have a housing rehab for accessibility needs for low income households within the City of Champagne. So if you have a renter. Or a homeowner that has an accessibility need, please have them reach out to the City of Champagne's Neighborhood Services Department at two one seven four zero three seventy seventy. And we can provide a grant to make accessibility modifications in a home up to ten thousand dollars. And there, this is federal funds, so there are some regulatory requirements and income verifications that need to take place, but we'd be happy to help anyone within the. City of Champagne limits. With that need.
So this, I just, I wanted to, of course, again, thank everybody, you know, just for their participation. It's been so amazing. And for. Us that see you at home. And again, for so many of you, because we've had so many conversations and meetings, we just keep coming back to again, making sure that we can. Develop this system out, really have a comprehensive cohesive shelter system. Because I think that one thing I've learned in in my time at See You At Home is that homelessness doesn't look one way. It's not a homogeneous group. And so I think a lot of the ideas that are being brought forward, it's it's yes to all of it. You know, it's yes to housing first, it's yes to tiny homes, it's yes to low barrier shelter and mid barrier shelter. Because the needs vary so greatly among the people that we serve. And so I think one of the most important things we can do is make sure that we keep coordinating. You know, because I I really can, I can see specific people in my mind that would. Be at different locations and sometimes at different times, but it would be something that works for them. It would be what is needed at the time for them. And so I think one of the things that, again, the the greatest service that we can do for our clients is to continue to make sure we're coordinating those so that people. Get to the right place that's going to take them to whatever the next step looks like for them. So I just, I'm thankful that. We're having these conversations. And I know somebody at the. Last board meeting said, you know, we we have a lot of these conversations, especially around this time of year. I think the goal hopefully would be that we would keep having them, but that they wouldn't always feel like a crisis every winter. That we really do develop out a system that says we we have something that's comprehensive and we have something that. By and large, works for the people that we're serving. So thank you for doing this.
I'm just going to add Brayden put in the chat earlier, and Brayden is the chair of our continuum of service providers to the homeless, put the information about the next meeting. Which is next week. So if any, most, many of you already attend those, but if anyone else is interested. In participating in those and joining, the Brayden put the information there, how to contact him. And as I said at at the opening. You know, this isn't, this isn't the end. We really are at a unique time in our community, and we have to look at how we strengthen what we have and how we fill in the gaps. And we have to harness the opportunities that we have. And we have to find new opportunities that we aren't aware of yet. And so the strategic planning that the that the continuum is is going to be engaging in. And conversations like these are going to be what what we need to truly put together. A continuum that is seamless. And I I think that's ultimately the the goal that that we want is a system that that works. So thanks, everybody.
So. I want to just thank everybody for the wonderful conversations we had tonight. And thank you to all the agencies that participated tonight. It's an invaluable experience to, you know, listen to all the wisdom that you guys can share with the boards and with each other. I I wish I wish this could go on all all night. I feel like we could always, I feel like we could talk all night. But if if I, if there are no other comments, I'm. I I can move to board announcements. Are there any board announcements? All right, seeing none, we can move to adjourn. But I think there was one more comment. Okay.
I'm sorry, that was that was me. Coming in just under the wire. The it's the Built for Zero is the program that I was thinking about where they do have. A model for how to how to keep track of all the data related to homelessness and services. I ha- I haven't looked at their program yet. But I I've looked at some of the communities who are part of the Built for Zero, so that might be something worth exploring.
Excellent. Don't forget to copy and paste that if you're interested in that. So seeing no other comments, I I will move to adjourn. I do. Do we need a second for that? I can't remember.
I second.
All right. Well, everyone have a wonderful evening. And I guess we'll see you next is meeting next month. So happy Halloween.